Good evening. Welcome to the, you don't have to stand up yet. Welcome to the December 16th zoning board of appeals meeting. It's Thursday, December 16th, 6:00 PM. Welcome, everybody, and let's begin with a pledge of allegiance, please. Everybody will stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
As the chairman, I'm going to take some prerogative here. Is the Cattell family here?
I'm here, but I said that was the last program. My husband is on the way.
Okay, well, I was going to move you up quick, but okay. We will not do that then. Is the Cooper family here? Okay.
They're not coming until next month.
We were trying to, I'm sorry.
They're not coming until-
They're not coming? Okay, all right, then let's proceed with the agenda. With Camp Victory Lake, we have a continuing public hearing. Is there a, I need a motion to continue public? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Before we start, just wanted to hand these out. So, these are visual renderings showing the height of the building compared to the actual roadways.
Okay.
I need one. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, Peter, welcome, sir. We're delighted to see you again.
Good to see you guys here again, too.
We'd like to talk some more about, we're going to talk about the height.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd also like to talk about the incursion on the lake, around the stream. Those two issues, which are the two in front of us. Do you want to proceed with, and you have some more information on the building height and the floor is yours?
Great, so, again, good to see you guys all again. So, the reason we're here tonight is to discuss the building height and the stream corridor buffer encroachment.
Correct.
The building height is for an increase of 47 and a half feet, and that's the 35 feet. And then the stream corridor buffer is from 100 feet to zero. This is because of several road improvements that have to be constructed up to the bridge. We're also going to be installing a dry hydrant for the fire department, which will also go right up to the stream. So, again, that disturbance will also be zero.
Okay, so, we can, let's talk about the building height first, and then we'll talk, because we have some other concerns about the stream incursion, or some questions, anyway.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll start with the building height. So, again, that's an increase of 12 and a half feet, and that's because of the split level we have it, so that the grading kind of changes with the main entry being kind of the second floor, and then the northern entry being kind of the ground floor. So, there's about whatever floor difference is there. And so, the building height was average of all the sides of the structure. And that's in that diagram that I showed you. It has the four views of the building. I have extra copies here, if you need it.
No, we have, we have the wood. Is that this one? All right.
Yeah, so, it's that drawing. So, that kind of shows how we got the averages. And since our last meeting-
Would you mind slowing down?
Yeah.
And just explain how we get the, tell me what the roof heights are and how we change that into the averages.
So, the way that the zoning code is written, it's the average of the final grade of the structure. So, how this is shows it is that it shows the grade of the structure and calculates the contour elevation, and then calculates how high each side of the structure is. So, if part of the structure is at 302, and then another side of that structure is 300, the average of that side would be 301. And so, then that is calculated for all four sides of the structure, and then averaged together. So, then that puts us at an average building grade at 307.35. And then, from there, it's taken from the midpoint of the roof, of the tallest part of the structure, and that is the height. So, from 307.35, the midpoint of the highest roof is 47 and a half feet tall. Since we last met, our architects actually prepared a couple of renderings. So, that would be that document that I handed out, showing how the building would look from North Quaker and Crum Elbow. Yes?
I still have a question. So, we're not measuring from the ground, ground in the front to the top?
No.
No?
No. So, it's the average of the ground in the front being here, averaging it to all the sides of the structure, and then-
All the way around back?
All the way around, so it's this side, this side, this side, and this side. This side being the lowest point and being the northern entrance.
Right.
So, that's the average combined. And from there, the midpoint of the roof is 47 and a half feet.
Okay. And we allow 35?
Yes. Yeah, so that's just the standard green, rebuilt zoning district. So, we hold that the site plan, I have it specified there.
So, 35, and you're asking for?
A 12 and a half foot increase to 47 and a half.
Okay.
Yes.
So, if we were in the front, and we were to look and measure it there, that's where it would be 63?
No, from, if you were in front, it would actually be much shorter than 60 feet. That would be around, I believe, 55 or so, not calculating it off. So, if you take a look at the-
To the highest roof?
Yes.
From the front to the highest roof?
Where's the front?
The front being this part right here, right?
Portico.
Portico, the front.
That's what you're talking about.
Is that, is that-
That's the east, that's the east side. Is that correct?
West.
No, west side.
West side, yeah.
Is that, in fact, the lowest elevation?
That is the, that is the highest elevation. The lowest elevation is taken from this side down here.
Because it's sloping.
I think we're saying different things.
No, it's sloping down. This is the lower part. This is the middle part. So, your measuring here is different from down here. This is the greatest.
Okay, so, here is the lowest part.
Correct.
But that's not the real grade, because there's windows there.
Well, this is the grade.
Right.
It's an average.
Yeah.
So, we're asking about 12, about 12, roughly 12 feet?
Yeah, so, put it in a different way. This floor elevation, the northern floor elevation is at 297.
Right.
And then the-
Now, when you say that 297, that's the top of the roof from that, or the bottom?
No, so, if you walk in through this door, that's the grade that that's at, 297.
Okay, okay, I'm with you.
And then, this western side of the structure is at 313.
Okay.
Right? So, traditionally, you would just take the average of that. Though, the architects went through the liberty of calculating the average grade across the whole structure. So, all the great problems.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Good.
So, since then, our architects prepared these renderings to show-
If you're going to go through the map, please use it, because I can't-
Yeah, no, my bad.
Thank you.
I'm losing the order.
My bad, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
So, anyways, yeah, so, these renderings were developed by the architect to show exactly how the building would look from the road.
Okay.
So, as you can see, I think probably SK02, which is the third page, gives it the best representation of how it's being built into that hillside.
02 or 03?
Uh, 02.
Okay.
So, that is from the intersection of Crum Elbow and North Quaker.
That's looking, that's looking northwest.
Yes, so, it would be looking from this elevation right here.
Right, okay.
So, as you can see, because of the way we kind of graded it into the side of the hill, it pretty much looks kind of like a normal heeded building. So, other than that, I would love to get any feedback from the board on this.
Looks like you're sitting on the road in the intersection.
Yeah.
So, I wasn't, my coworker took this, so, I think he was like standing back like this, because the architects were trying to get the most straight and even picture.
Okay.
So, and it also kind of humps, so he could have been sitting more of in a shallow portion of the road.
It certainly gives us a perspective.
Mm-hmm.
And the, okay, so, SK01 is coming up from Quaker, driving south, and that's the perspective. And I am looking at the north end of the building, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Are these trees going to stay here?
Good question. Peter, are the trees going to stay?
Yes, so, these trees, I don't believe are going to be disturbed. I have the grading plan here. So, the only part of that vegetative buffer that is going to be disturbed is up towards here. And for, in response, we did lots of landscaping up there. Evergreen trees, so they keep their needles all year round.
Okay.
And we have it kind of staggered for a natural feel of it.
Okay.
And that's just to kind of replace that, and then also, pretty much throughout all the road borders.
How much space between the road and the building now that you have it, so, in terms of planting trees? You're not, you're not going to put a road behind the building now anymore, because the fire department indicated that they were, they were okay.
Correct, so, I had met with the fire department, and they had, because initially, we had the building around here.
Right.
Still kind of similar grade, but we had discussed having moved it north, and then moved it a little west, so we can put this fire access lane in.
Right.
And so, that's so they can have access to this side of the building as well.
Right, but you're not going to do that now?
No, that's, that is, that's still in the plan.
Okay.
Yep.
So, on the east side of that building, and some on the southeast corner, you're going to be planting fir trees?
Yes, evergreens, yep.
Point that out, Peter.
Evergreen.
Yeah, so, they'll be, so, we have evergreens planted all along this border, with a heavier set of plantings over here, and that's because we're disturbing it, so we got to stabilize that area and get replacement vegetation.
So, the ones on SK02, those are going to be taken down and then replanted?
Yeah, the SK02 should stay relatively the same. It depends what we need for electrical utilities. But other than that, that's also just going to get replanted anyways. So, any sort of disturbance that goes in there, also another evergreen buffer.
And you said SK01, most of those are going to stay as well?
Yeah, most of them will stay. I would actually assume all of that, because our grading activities don't really affect too much in that portion. We have a bit of a swell, but that kind of, these plantings are pretty much right along this edge.
So, the new ones are going to be further, in relation to SK01, where would the new ones be planted?
The new ones, so, if you look just past there,
Yeah.
You should see a line of evergreens as well. So, that kind of fills in the blank spaces shown in SK01.
You can see that.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Good. You said that some of the vegetative buffer that's there now is coming down, or is not? I missed that.
Some of the trees.
This portion over here, where we have to get regrading, so that portion will be coming down, but we'll be replacing it.
Okay.
Is the building color accurate here?
Um, it's, it's, so, I asked this about, because they kind of have, they're working through what the siding is going to be, but they're going to stick with the green Adirondack style coloring, and more of a brownish.
Okay, right.
Yeah, and then a darker trim along the edges of the building.
Okay, all right, good. Question?
So, I have the letter from the Roosevelt Fire here, from Raymond Stretts.
Mm-hmm.
And he says that you agreed that there was no problem with either of these two things. One, first, that you're going to move the building back from the road a few feet, so they can get access to North Quaker's side. Now, I don't think he was looking for a road, but where you had that, the one on the south side of the building?
So-
He wants to get the back of the-
Yeah, so, I had actually, right off the back, I had met with them early on, before the idiot was even circulated to them and showed them the plans.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I met with him last Saturday.
Okay, perfect.
So, are you confused?
He said he was looking for that to move out, so that they could get the truck back far enough and get the ladder up. It's a 100-foot ladder.
Mm-hmm.
And then they can hold back side of the, of the building itself.
Peter, where, where do they-
And he was also looking for two dry hydrants.
Okay.
Where do they see, on your sheet there, where do they see the truck, the fire truck coming in?
This is as far as they can get right here.
They come in right in here.
Okay, what about on the north side?
North side? That would be, they would be able to come down through here and access it this way.
Okay, so, so, we're okay here? Okay.
He wants to get back here. This is the road ending here.
Right.
Right? This sits on the back of the truck.
When I had met with him initially, I had shown him this new revised design, so he basically put them in a written form, his comments when we were having that meeting, way back in March 2020.
Yeah, I understand. Okay.
Martin?
Wait, we have a difference of opinion?
I was there on, talked to him on November 2nd, and I told him on Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
And he still said that that's, that I confirmed, when I had, I've got a copy of this, I confirmed with him what he wanted, and I said, because the drawing hasn't changed since I gave him an updated drawing that I had on November 2nd.
Okay.
Okay, Peter, what's your understanding of the location of the building now with access by the fire department?
So, the, its current location is what we had shown to the fire department back in March of, March or February of 2020, and this is what he kind of okayed during that initial meeting with him.
We haven't moved the building in terms of this, I know we were messing around with that in terms of a road behind there on the east side of the building, next to Quaker, but we have not done that. We've kept the building where it originally was going to be.
Correct, because we had finessed some of the grading along the sides, but because we wanted to nail down that grading, we had shown him the copy way back when, and this is what the layout that he approved of.
Okay, all right.
And when was that?
That was back in 2020.
Okay, I, like I said, I was there on November 2nd.
I guess what I'm hearing is we need confirmation. Again, this seems to contradict a little bit of that.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're close, but we need to have-
Can I just show you my-
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I think the way I interpret it is, when they back the truck up, if they can only get it to here, they want to get it here, so they can get it here.
Hmm.
Right? And then here, they can get the ladder sideways, kind of.
Yeah.
So, they get a good area there, this area here.
Mm-hmm.
So-
So, the architects seem to have cut off a little bit. We did let it go over the edge. Because this, that is a more of a, that's more of a conceptual architectural rendering. So, as you can see, we extended it further out that way.
Yeah.
So that they can get that tail and swing it in.
So, why don't you show, is this is the final, or this is the final?
This is-
This is, this is the final. That was prepared by the architect to just kind of show the viewpoints that they were displaying.
So, that Ray needs to see.
Yes.
So, that fits in terms of him being able to get the-
It's up to Ray.
I just want to confirm. At this point, we don't anticipate that the location of the building is going to change based on any conversations with the fire department.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
I would disagree, but.
Well, the only thing that would change, then, is if we needed to, we would extend the retaining wall a little further and give us a little more tail. So, regardless, the building height would still remain the same.
Okay. And if Ray's fine with it?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Well, again, this is, so, part of all this, we, I was waiting to resubmit to the ZBA, because there's some other comments from the planning board. We received some of the circulation comments in, so I was going to give the ZBA a full resubmital, but other than that, the building, all that, the location, not going to change.
Okay, all right. So, we know the height difference, approximately 12 feet. The building is in the same position. We know that there will be plantings along Quaker, which actually, if I understand, Peter, the perspective on S1 actually would be more, we would see with the, you call them fir trees?
Mm-hmm, you wouldn't see it.
Evergreens?
Evergreens, pine trees? I'm sorry. Somebody's going to have to teach me. That pretty much would block out the view of the building along there.
Correct.
And would those extend on S2, or on SK02? Those firs come down to the corner and then move west?
Yep, so, we have the firs wrapping all the way around. So, it starts here, goes all the way around and into here as well.
Okay, good. Gentlemen, questions on this?
I don't think so.
No? Ms. Moss, is there any issue that you see on this?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay. Then let's move to the 100-foot on the, on the, I know that you've gone from 100 to zero because the road is going to cross the pond. We understand that. My concern is, you're moving five buildings,
Yep.
Which are, I'm going to call them, these are not-
Cabins.
Well, cabins, these are bunkhouses, basically. These have approximately 12 to 15 people would be sleeping in them.
Mm-hmm.
So, these are not lounge around, these are sleeping there and come out.
Correct.
So, the concept that I heard, Peter, is that we move those to the, closer to the pond, and so people can enjoy that view, but the reality is, they're going to be bunking and then leaving.
Mm-hmm.
My question to you, because of the concern, the 100-foot regulation is really to help the fauna and all the animals able to move along that creek.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's what we're protecting in the 100 feet. You're really moving in toward the creek with those buildings, and I'm, what I'm wondering is, I understand you need to move them for the parking, but what about moving the buildings further south? There is, there are a couple cabins behind those, and there is property, there is the flat land there. What about moving them there? Here, let me-
Are you talking about this area right in here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that is going to be like the main entrance. So, we really didn't want to clutter up that area with new buildings. We actually have to remove one, because there's four actually here, and one of them is kind of old and dilapidated within the setback. So, we're actually trying to remove that. I just wanted to touch base on the stream corridor, kind of for native species. So, again, we actually reserved this whole area on the north to be no disturbance, just a conservation zone.
I understand that, that's the turtle land.
Yeah.
I understand that. Okay.
That's the other side of the lake?
Yeah, the other side of the pond is correct.
So, again, we're also open to providing additional plantings in that area. If it is for habitat, we would gladly plant additional plantings. We're already providing dry wells in that area, so that stormwater is definitely infiltrated into the ground.
Yeah, I want to come back to that.
Yeah.
But just, just in terms of plantings and protection of any wildlife that may be moving through, I don't know how much moves through there now, these, I know you have an amphitheater there, or a open one. Where is that relative to, or is that, you're taking that out?
No, so, that's actually going to stay. Part of my next submission was to kind of get that drawn in there. So, that's on this little knoll. They also run docks along here, and it's all grass yard. So, there's really not much habitat for native animals in that area anyways.
Sunday, there was a raccoon out there.
Oh.
But I think he likes the garbage.
But you came early.
He can stay under the bunkhouses.
I guess, okay, if, is there other, other plantings and other things that you're anticipating in that?
There isn't currently. The idea was to just kind of leave it grass yard, but if it makes a zoning board more comfortable, we'd gladly plant additional plantings in that area.
Let me get back to the turtles. You don't think the turtles could cohabitate with those buildings?
I think they could, absolutely. But I would say that the grass yard-
Protected side, whole immune on the other side.
Because that looked like high enough land where they would be high and dry.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, this, because Blanding's turtles typically like the low-lying wetland areas. Lots of foliage, lots of food. Because of it being all grass yard and steeply slope, you wouldn't expect Blanding's turtles on that side anyways. You would more expect it towards the wood side.
But what I'm saying is, on the wood side, that the contours indicate that it is high ground.
Yeah, it is.
But there is actually wetlands draining from the northern side into it, so you have these pooling areas around here.
There's actually a knoll right there. It was in your package we got today.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe it's in here someplace, I'll look.
Okay, all right.
Was it the master plan set?
I don't know, there was a lot of, there was a lot of.
I have it right here, if you want to. So, this is the overall existing conditions plan. So, the area that we're talking about is right in here, and so, these are some of the wetland areas that we have draining down into the lake from that side. So, we figure that that's ideal spot for native species.
This right here is a knoll, you see it?
Yeah, but that's where, you're going to have, yeah, but this is where the road goes across here.
Yeah, so, this is our stream.
They have easy access. The road's going to-
The road's going to come right across here.
And?
And?
This is where the-
No, this is the protected area up here.
Right, so, the cabins could easily go here, is what I'm saying.
So, they would still be within the buffer? Because a buffer-
Would apply to this side as well.
Well, I think that that's-
I don't know if that's enough space.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay, all right. So, I think at a minimum, well-
A lot of the print wouldn't be the thing.
We need to-
Yeah, I printed out full size for the submission. I have 11-by-17s for everyone as well.
Are there other questions on the protection of wildlife, et cetera?
No.
On that? Okay, let's go to a second issue on the 100-foot. And this has to do with the drainage, and you are basically at one of the headwaters of the Fall Kill, which dumps into and goes through Poughkeepsie, and ends up down, goes down to the Children's Museum. My understanding is that the, you have your own sewer treatment plant on property, and that's adhering to all the standards there in terms of that. And that will be discharging into the creek, is that correct?
Correct. They already maintain a speedies permit to do so.
So, right. So, what I'm getting around to is the volume going into, are we really increasing the volume of fluid water going into that creek? We have the sewer, and now we have the impervious area around the parking here. Talk to me a little bit more, Peter, just refresh my memory in terms of the parking itself. You have, and these are my words, dry wells or something that will absorb the water off of the parking areas? Is that correct?
Correct, so, part of our overall development with the planning board is the creation of a stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Right.
So, we've designed detailed stormwater treatment measures to kind of handle that additional impervious. So, we have infiltration chambers and sand filters in this parking, part of the parking- part of the parking lot area. We have some of these center islands. There's gonna be, I believe, subsurface infiltration chambers in this part. Over here, we have diversion swale with more sand filters. So it's really the idea to capture as much of that impervious surface stormwater runoff and get it into these areas where it can be treated and not flow into the creek but be infiltrated into the ground.
Well, it's, it's not, you're not gonna treat it. You're just gonna retain it until it has time to absorb. Is that-
Technically, it is the treatment because the sand, for the sand filters will actually, so there's gravel diaphragms, which they take large debris, dirt, twigs, leaves, things like that. They'll capture that. And then the stormwater will move into the sand filter, which sand is an excellent stormwater filter. So the idea is that that actually treats the stormwater being-
Okay.
-before it infiltrates into the ground.
Question, I'm assuming you've got a capacity of the roof in terms of water coming off of the roof?
Mm-hmm.
Has that been calculated in this?
Correct. Yeah, we have, so part of the planning board comments was to specify where those roof leaders are gonna go.
Right.
They're actually gonna be sent into this, and this is a grass filter strip, into swales with check dams, one to provide infiltration treatment. So that's all accommodated.
So the roof capacity is accounted for?
Correct.
Okay. Second, what, the 100-year storm is changing. It's going from like four inches to eight inches. What, what capacity are you anticipating here in terms of the 100-year storm?
You know, I'm gonna have to, so we calculate the 100-year storm per, per DEC standards currently. Whenever they update the standards, that's what kind of gets in the filtration. But we always are under the impression that the current regulations treat for greater. But that being said, we're, we're fulfilling DEC accommodations now.
But the predictions or the projections now are that 100-year is eight inches of rain as opposed to four, I think. And my concern is, and I would anticipate we're gonna get 100-year rain in 10 years or less. What's the, what capacity do we have, or excess capacity do we have here?
I cannot honestly answer that. That's more on the stormwater end of things. But I can have him give me his specs and I can provide that to the board if they wish.
Because it all relates then to capacity of handling the water that is going to impact the stream, et cetera. So I think that's, okay. If you could clarify that, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Questions, other questions?
I want to finish writing.
Good, okay.
Okay. When I was young, in my twenties, I used to think we could fix everything and it would last forever. How long are those stormwater treatment areas gonna last? And are you obligated to replace or upgrade them on a regular basis?
Yes. We, you have to provide constant maintenance. There's actually a maintenance log that's prepared with each SWIP so that that calls for regular maintenance.
Do you get that?
That, I believe Ted does.
Yeah, your, your stormwater management officer over there.
And does she then have somebody that checks that for her to make sure that they have-
I believe the theory is that the town sends out a letter to the developer and says, hey, it's been so many years. Your engineer is required to send us his inspection report from this year.
And he has to put a seal on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Moss, is, is there, do we know at this point what the 100-year storm amount is? I mean, do we, has that changed for, for the city?
It's my understanding that there is a running assessment of the current numbers-
Okay.
...through observation and measuring and that the engineers keep up with that and use-
So it's a changing, it's a changing thing?
It's a changing number and it's set when they do the SWIP.
It will be set when they start, but if it changes, how, how does Peter's building, do we have to come back to him in terms of-
No.
Do they have to readjust?
No.
Okay, so we're betting on the standards that are, are today in effect?
The-
Last year.
It is the 2020. It's the most recent update.
Is it? The, the, the primary concern for stormwater pollutants is within the first flush. The first two inches, two inches is it? Two inches of rain?
Stormwater guy. Got it, huh?
And that's, anything over that, your pollution is so diluted that you can't account for it.
Okay.
The volume that goes through, there's always overflows for volume. So if it's greater, it passes-
Okay.
Than the design capacity. I, I don't recall what the design capacities are.
Okay, alright.
Just runs over the top, keeps on going.
Yeah, okay.
But it's protected so that it won't-
Right.
-erode-
Okay.
-or fail.
Okay. Other, other questions? Do we, where are we in terms of, do we need other information? Do we need to continue this?
Yes, we would continue the public hearing. It's my understanding that the planning board has requested a formal comment from the ZBA regarding any potential environmental concerns you may have so that they will consider those when potentially coming to a seeker determination of significance. So if you want to, you could authorize your board or your chair to send that letter. And then I would continue the public hearing until after seeker has been completed and then you would be able to ask.
We're also waiting for Deuce County Planning.
That as well.
Okay, so we need an authorization, I need an authorization from my board to forward a letter of, of information to the planning board relative to-
I make a motion that we authorize the board to send a letter to the-
To me, authorize me to send it?
To the planning board-
Okay.
-about the environmental concerns.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, good. Anything else?
We need to continue.
I'm sorry?
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
To what date?
January 26th. Thank you.
Okay, good. Peter, thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Always a pleasure.
As ever, it's, you're training us.
I don't believe we did the voice vote for that.
I'm sorry?
I don't believe we actually voted on that.
On which?
We just did a motion and a second?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we need to vote on the motion.
For continuing the public hearing.
We have a motion for a continuation of the public hearing to January 16th.
January 26th.
Motion.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it.
We understand Rite Aid Pharmacy has been moved to the next, to next month?
Yes.
Okay.
Right aid, out of here.
I'm sorry, was there a vote?
Yeah, I was about to say for Rite Aid, you still need to formally vote to continue.
Okay, we, we have a motion to continue the public hearing for Rite Aid to-
So first, open to motion, or motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing on Rite Aid Pharmacy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, does anyone from the public want to talk about Rite Aid?
Is there anybody from the public that wants to talk about the Rite Aid signage issues?
Don't all come at once.
Sing, sing, none?
I make a motion that we close the public, or-
Continue.
We continue the public hearing till January 26th.
26th?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. The Cooper's here.
Next month.
Oh, next month. I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. Key Construction is here. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is an introduction. This is an introduction meeting council.
You should give up the Ted show.
Thank you.
Patrick, look at this.
This is, we're just pulling this information.
We got a bunch of this stuff, right?
After we hear all of it.
She sent us a shipload of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay.
This is just a beta parcel, I guess.
Well, there is now-
We got this.
Okay, and, Ms. May, have your name?
Yes, I'm Kelly Leibert with KRC Planning.
Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, Kelly, welcome.
Thank you.
Pleasure to have you here.
Thank you.
And we are anxious to hear about the project.
Very well. I represent the applicant, which is Key Construction. The property is owned by Jasa LLC, but we commonly call the applicant Key Construction.
Is Jasa, is owned by, say it again, please?
Jasa, J-A-S-A.
Okay.
And there's an, there's a consent form in there to allow us to appear. This project is largely before the planning board. We've been working, as you know, with the planning board for quite some time and so-
Yes.
-we had a area variance that is required for scale. And so we're here tonight to talk to you about that area variance. I just want to give you a quick rundown on the property so you know what we're talking about.
Okay.
I think everyone knows this as the 9G drive-in. I grew up in Hyde Park, so I grew up at the 9G drive-in.
I didn't, but I love drive-ins, so I understand.
Okay, so it's the old, the old-
And I have seen it. I've been in there.
Good. So it's the old 9G drive-in. The property is about 17 acres. It's very large. It's deceiving. It's in the East Park Business District.
Do you have the microphone?
I do.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Can you hear me okay? I feel like I'm yelling to you.
No, you're not.
No.
Okay.
I'm old, so you're not yelling.
Okay.
It's also the mask.
Yes. If I drop, hopefully someone picks me up from the masks and the, and the, yes.
Can you take off the mask while she's talking?
It's, it's okay.
No, no, okay.
It's whatever you want me to do.
We, no, you're doing fine.
Thank you. So the project is 17 acres, but it is largely vegetated and it also contains a wetland.
Right.
So as you probably know, for those of you who have been back there, you drive in and there's really a wetland on kind of both sides, back in the woods. We've worked with the planning board and our ecologist and DEC to, excuse me, to have the wetland delineated and that edge of the wetland has been verified. So again, more of a planning board issue, but I'm just telling you the steps that we've gone through.
But the wetlands, I think, you know, we are concerned about the wetlands in terms of this. Is this on, I'm looking at-
So if you go to the sec-
The second page?
The second page, yeah. If you go to the second page, it shows the survey and the wetland has been field verified by New York State DEC. So what happens is you have a biologist and ecologist that goes out, they flag the wetland, it's picked up on a survey, and then New York State DEC goes out and they confirm the presence of the wetland.
Is the wetlands here, Kelly, is the wetlands here the exterior of these, of the wiggly line?
No, that's actually the tree line. So to the left of the squiggly line, you'll see a line that has sort of tags on it that are numbers.
Right.
And that's the edge of the wetland.
And, and so that would go to the west, toward the west end of the property?
Correct, yeah. It's sort of a pond that sits in the back.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll tell you that we did a field just so that you have some information about the wetland. And the planning board has highly, you know, it's in their purview and they've highly regulated the review of the wetland.
Right.
But there is a very large rock ledge that appears on the edge of the wetland, between the wetland and the tree line. Very large rock ledge. And so there are Blandings turtles out at this location.
Okay.
And we have applied to DEC for our permits.
Okay.
And as part of that permit, we'll get some feedback from them on how, if any, they want us to mitigate the Blandings turtle beyond what we're already doing, which is really predominantly pertains to construction.
So it's in that wetlands, which is on the west side of the property?
Correct. Correct, yep.
Okay, is there wetlands on the east side of the property?
There is wetlands on the east side, but much further back than where we're developing. But yes, there are.
There's a dotted line on the far east side. Is that, is that a?
No. If you look at the squiggly line, which are the trees, and then to the right of that, you'll see that same type of line that has tags attached to it. And that's the wetland.
Oh, okay.
And I apologize. If I, if I knew that you wanted that highlighted, we'll highlight it for you in the future.
That would be fine.
So that actually goes all the way around your property pretty much?
It really does, you know? I mean, it's, it's an upland area that was developed for the drive-in and that's the-
Made sneaking into the drive-in difficult.
It did. Yes.
You?
It definitely did. And I know that long driveway, we all snuck in there many times.
I used to sneak in an old Hudson.
So the, the applicant is proposing to use this property for three uses. One is his office. So he's moving his office and all of his staff from the city of Poughkeepsie to Hyde Park. And so there'll be an office for his staff and then a small little warehouse for equipment. It's a construction company, so it's a smaller work-
Is that, is that the, the large building? I come up, I'm, I'm on the first page.
Sure. You come up the driveway and it's the first building to the left.
Okay, that's the office-
That has all the parking. That's the office and the warehouse.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Now you have several other outbuildings here.
The small buildings to the right, you'll see one, two, three, four, five buildings to the right.
Yeah.
Those are conventional storage units, like you'd see when you drive up the road that most of our residential people use. Their one-story garage on the exterior.
So this will be also a storage, a public storage?
Correct, correct. And then, yes.
How come they're different sizes and shapes?
Just the way that they fit on the property. So you can essentially take the area that you have available and then fit units in that space.
Are they actually different sizes, the, the units themselves?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
You can, you can put your car in there. Okay, so the two buildings on the north end?
So those are also storage, but we call them commercial storage. So they're larger, taller, have taller garage doors on them. And what we see, people utilizing them are really contractors or more commercial users. And so that's storage space for commercial users.
Okay. Is there, is there an area to clean heavy equipment?
No.
None. So this is just storage?
Correct.
So some other contractor can come in and use this for storage area?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. We have, we have one small spot. If you look at the area, there's like a driveway, there's a hatched area on the plan behind the office building to the, if you're looking down to the right of it, so to the east of it.
Yeah.
And it's hatched. So that's an area where a vehicle could be parked or stored. And we have shown that as pavement. Right now, it's showing here as item four, but it would be pavement. So if someone had a heavy piece of equipment that they had to come in and park for the day.
Okay.
If there was something that was gonna be unloaded, we have that.
That's to the, as I'm looking at the front of that office building, it's to the right of that?
Correct. Yeah, yep.
And is the, you have the outlying area from the road coming in, that's all impervious?
Correct. Yep, correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, and then how are you handling the, the water from that?
So all of this has been, is being very intensely reviewed by the planning board and we have prepared a SWIP. The planning board has an attorney or an engineer, Pete Sotera from Clark Patterson Lee. So that's been submitted to him and that's been under review. There were some minor changes to the SWIP. At this point, the planning board has done a fairly extensive review and they're to the point where they're ready to complete their seeker decision. But of course, they're looking to this board, just like the prior applicant, for some feedback to them so that they can complete the seeker review. But the answer to your question is, we prepared a SWIP, just like the prior applicant, and submitted that to Pete for his review.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The colored-in area is the only area that is paved.
Correct.
But you may use some of the other area around the, on the edges of it or?
So the only area that you see colored is paved and that's the only disturbed area. So that's the edge of the curb.
Because if somebody's bringing equipment in on a trailer, wouldn't they not like to just loop right around to go out of there?
They won't be able to. There'll be a curb on the edge of that property. Yeah, that's the edge of, we call that the edge of disturbance. So that's the limits of disturbance for the project.
I think about that because it uses less fuel to just drive in a straight line all the way.
Sure. I mean, we can never figure out, we always design, you know, a certain way, particularly snow storage. You know, we design snow storage areas everywhere and do the contractors use them? Not always. You know, we can never encourage that type of behavior. So the area-
So there is a, there is a road to the, behind the office?
Yes. That brings you to the large, those are the larger commercial storage.
Okay, you, now I'm confused.
See, that looks different.
I'm, I'm looking at this right now.
Okay, let me open up the plan that you're making up.
Can you, can you come up here?
Sure. Yes, let me just open it so I have it. Okay, just so he has the recording.
Okay. So is this, is there a?
No, there is not.
Okay.
And this is- And this is...
So traffic, traffic would flow, obviously it'd come in this way?
Yes.
Here?
Yep, and back.
Either side here?
Correct, yep.
But there's no, there's no backup?
There isn't, and it's not intended for large vehicles to come through. In the back, there's ma, we call them man doors, they're pedestrian doors that are in the back of this building. It's not int...
All your heavy traffic is going here?
Correct, and this project has been reviewed by the fire department, they have signed off on this plan, and we actually made modifications to the building based on the fire department's feedback. So this is the plan that's been vetted through the fire department.
Okay.
All right?
All right, okay.
So anything else...
If I'm gonna store my stuff there and I got my trailer, I'm gonna have a hard time turning around.
Well, no, you've got...
No.
Well, but it's self-constricting, so it really actually would limit what you're, so you're not gonna get a tractor trailer in here, and that's okay. We don't want to.
I have a regular trailer.
Yeah, yeah.
A machine.
But you've got 74 feet here.
Yeah, that is, that is...
If you can do it 74 feet, I'd better...
Yes, and we actually, you know, this did get vetted through the fire department. These buildings were actually further out, and we pushed them in so they could get access back there, but they didn't need the through road through the back.
It is B.
Yep, yep.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, so that's the project. Okay, so I'll go on to the, the reason that we're here is the area variance for scale. And I'm sure everyone knows what scale is, tad in my favorite thing. So scale is, in this particular municipality, the bulk requirement that the municipality uses to restrict or control density. In many other municipalities, you see percent coverage terminology, and in this town, you use scale. The permitted scale in this zoning district is 40,000 square feet, which is a little bit less than an acre. And what we're asking for is 64,000, sorry, I have to keep putting my glasses back.
64016?
Oh, 1-6, yep, which is slightly over the 40 that's permitted.
50%.
And so we don't believe, yeah, we don't believe that it's significant. We did provide you with the area variance application, really the zoning so that you could see it, and the argument for that increase. And, you know, I, I know that it is 50%, I, I understand that. But the scale, the way that it's done in the town of Hyde Park, again, it's very different than you see in other municipalities, and it's restricting to larger lots. So when you have a large lot like this, if your scale that you're permitted is 40,000 square feet, it's such a small percentage of the lot. But if you had an acre, which is 43,000 square feet, and you're allowed to develop 40,000 square feet, you could almost develop the entire lot. So when you have scale that's a fixed number in a square foot versus a percentage of the total lot, it's very restricting for large lots, and this is a large lot. So this is a 17-acre lot, and when you think about the justification for a request like this, obviously, we look at the threshold test that's required for New York State and also for the town of Hyde Park, and is there an impact to the neighborhood? Is there an impact to neighboring properties? This property is so heavily wooded, and it's so heavily screened from all of the other properties, and we feel that this use is a very de minimis use. I mean, there's certainly far more impactive uses that could be proposed here, that we do not believe that it will be any impact to the neighboring properties and to the neighbors, nor to the community character. This property is set back significantly, as you know, that long driveway from 9G, and it's 100% screened from 9G, so you're not gonna see this property.
Is, is your, that road, I've driven on that road going in, is that all on your property?
It is.
So you would pave that all the way?
Correct, yes, and we have an application before GO2.
So if I understand correctly, you have 17 acres, which is roughly 630,000 square feet?
That is correct.
And we're putting 60,000 feet into that...
That is correct.
Space.
Yes. It's eight, I think it ends up being eight and a half percent.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, it's just compacted in terms of a particular area here.
It is, we would call it a clustered, you know, clustered development.
Questions?
Where is Key now? Where are the...
They're in the city of Poughkeepsie, on Main Street.
Oh.
Yep, and the building that they're in is part of a very big development project that's going in in the city of Poughkeepsie. So they have a lot of places that they could move to, and they've picked this, you know, they owned this property and picked this. So, you know, it is a significant move from a company, from one municipality to another, and I think the town is excited about having them here and the staff.
I see their trucks on 9G all the time.
Good, yeah.
Counsel, any questions from your perspective?
No questions. Procedurally, I would point out that you could set a public hearing for the January meeting if you would like.
Right, yeah.
And also to get the ball rolling, you could move to refer this to county planning pursuant to general municipal law 239M.
Okay, I would like a motion to prefer this to county planning. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, second, I'd like a motion to set a public hearing for this for January 20, 26th.
26th, yep.
Motion?
Second.
Second, in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see other things here. Yes, we have to set up a... Yeah, we're, we're gonna do that. Hold on there.
This really helps.
Gentlemen, are any, Ms. Moss, any questions from your perspective? Counsel?
No.
Okay, Madam Secretary, is there anything?
No, we're all set.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask you one question. The planning board is desiring to move forward with SEAKER, and they are asking that the ZBA provide them, just like the last application, with any issues that you may have with the environmental review of this project. Of course, they're the lead agency, and they've completed the environmental review. They asked us to come, obviously, before you tonight to see if you had any comments relative to this application, so that would be useful in their decision. We are on the January, I believe, meeting for the planning board.
All right.
I make a motion that we have our chairman send them any concerns we have about the environmental aspects of this project.
Okay. My second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, very good.
Okay, very well, thank you very much.
Kelly, thank you.
Have a wonderful holiday, everyone.
You too, you too, thank you. Okay.
No.
No, they're not here. Okay. Do I have to set up the public hearing? For Catell? No, we're seeing the Cattells. Yes, come up, good, welcome. Yeah, we'll get, okay. I'm gonna make sure, kick me on again. Good evening, sir.
Hi there.
Can you tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure.
And what you're looking to do?
Yeah, so my name's William Catell. Myself and my wife own the property at 140 Old Quaker Lane since 1997. And when we bought the house, there was, there was a section of the house that after we took possession of the house, we found out still had an open building permit. And it was a, it was a glassed-in sort of solarium that the previous owner had built, and apparently had never, never gotten it past code, never gotten it inspected. Mr. Westermeyer came over and said that it was just completely out of code and was already starting to, already starting to rot. So we applied for a building permit. So we weren't, we weren't ready, we didn't have the finances or the plans to decide what we wanted to do with that. So we applied for a building permit to remove it, put up railings on the three different doors that opened out onto it from a story above. And so that was inspected and approved. And we raised our three children and still didn't have enough money to decide what to do.
I understand.
And now we're, we're empty nesters. Those railings are still very strong, but we're ready to, to do something with it. It is a concrete slab, one story down from the first floor at the basement level, that was, that the previous owner built. Prior to that, it's a 200-year-old farmhouse, prior to that, it was a screen porch, apparently a beautiful screen porch. We hear from the older folks in the neighborhood that he took down. So anyway, we, we want to build a, a sunroom, more or less in the footprint of what was always there, slight, slightly bigger.
Slight, when you say, say slightly bigger, what's Catell, toward the pond, how much...
Right.
How much more?
Okay, so the existing house, the back of the existing house that faces the pond is approximately 40, 41 feet, does it say in the, somewhere around 42 feet?
41 says here.
41 feet. The addition will be flush with that same back end of the house. So it'll be no closer to the pond than the existing 200-year-old house. It will be maybe, maybe five feet, five feet more than the, than that solarium was, because the solarium, the solarium didn't go all the way to the back of the other part of the house. So what we're proposing, what we're proposing is doesn't encroach any closer to the pond than what, than what's already there. And to the, to the south, it is four feet, it is four feet farther out than the existing concrete slab. So we're disturbing, we're disturbing an additional four feet along the southern border of the addition. But that is not towards the pond.
I drove around Sunday, and I was looking for a stream. I really don't see much of a stream anywhere.
No, you can't, you can't see a stream. So what it is, is that our pond, there's no inlet and there's no outlet.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's possibly spring-fed, or maybe it just seeps up through the water table. Now, the neighbor to our south...
Okay.
He has a marshy area behind his house. So historically, I would think that, that marshy area extended behind our house towards the south, and eventually farther south, like four or five houses down and towards the power lines, it, it becomes a, there is a stream back there, which is, forget the technical term for a stream, that, that's dried up part of the year, an intermittent stream.
Yeah.
And so that's a very, that's a very valuable wetland. We, we're very meticulous, we, we've never put any fertilizer on our lawn, because we know that our pond is right there, and that, that the spring peepers are a couple hundred yards down in that marshy area.
And you would have to cut your grass more off.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Questions?
Nope.
Okay, all right, what, what we'd like to do then is, is to schedule a public hearing for...
This is the public hearing.
I'm sorry, this is the...
I misheard you. You need to open, the public hearing was already scheduled for tonight.
Okay, I'd like a motion to open the public hearing for this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I apologize.
Anybody want to talk about Mrs. Catell?
Okay, are there other questions?
No.
Ms. Moss, any?
Oh, no, no, no additional.
Okay, and there's nobody from, and we haven't received any, anybody?
No, no comments, no.
Okay, all right, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have then a resolution prepared. I'll go through this quickly. Resolution to grant an area variance for William and Malle Catell, Catell?
Yes.
Sorry, of 140 Old Quaker Lane, Hyde Park, New York 12538, December 16th, 2021. Resolution 21-22Z, whereas the applicant, William and Malle Catell, have submitted an application for an area variance for a stream corridor incursion in the Greenbelt District from 100 feet to 41 feet to replace a removed structure with an attached addition. The project at property located at 140 Old Quaker Lane, Hyde Park, New York 12538, identified as tax parcel number 626402895580 in the Greenbelt zoning district, whereas the project is depicted on a survey map entitled Old South Quaker Lane. And whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from zoning law section 108 4.3G2 to permit a stream corridor incursion to 41 feet where 100 feet is required. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law section 108 33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The required variance will allow the applicant to replace an addition previously removed from an existing foundation attached to the existing house. The addition will connect with doors from multiple rooms of the house. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The existing 200-year-old estimate house has been, has an existing incursion of 59 feet into the 100-foot stream pond corridor. This attachment addition will not exceed that. The requested variance is numerically substantial. The applicant has requested a stream corridor incursion of 41 feet, which is less than the incursion of the existing house. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The previously attached addition not built according to code is being replaced with a new addition that will meet the existing code requirements. The difficulties are self-created. Be further resolved that the zoning board hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions, payment of all fees. Is there a second on this motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a roll call.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
James Agarwal?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly?
Yes.
Richard Perkins?
Yes.
Darrell Bowen?
Yes.
David McNary?
Yes. All right, sir, good luck on your project.
Okay, thank you very much.
And when it's finished, we'll, we'll come for the party.
Okay, good. Happy holidays.
And I know the, the long slog that you've had to put this up, and I think you're gonna enjoy it.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. We need to, one other thing here, I was reminded by my colleague, the Samuel and Stephanie Cooper, we need to move, we need to move that to next, next month? Is that correct?
Yes, we need to set a public hearing, but you can do that on your own.
Okay, all right, so we don't need a motion there?
No.
Okay, all right. Yeah, okay, that's it. Do we have any other business before the board?
If you'd like to approve the minutes from last month?
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last?
Motion.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, is there a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. All right, who is the, who is the baker of this fine goods?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, Merry Christmas.
We want to wish, we want to wish you and Serena and Patrick a very happy holiday.
Cute little love.
We, we can't thank you enough for your support this year, it's been significant.